Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, December 16th, 2024. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoibler?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Sheva.
If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin this evening with the public hearing portion of the agenda, the opportunity for the applicants to come forward and explain their project to the community, and then an opportunity for members of the community to speak on the project. We begin this evening with the first item, which is a conditional use permit application for self-serve storage on Old Mill Road. The applicant can please come forward, your name, your address, and an explanation of what you're looking for this evening.
So, good evening. I'm Thomas Flynn from TurnDev or Cleveland, Ohio, Beechwood, Beechwood, Ohio-based developer. With me is Brandon Klein from the Geis Company that does work with us, and we're here tonight to seek your approval for a conditional use permit for a climate-controlled self-storage building that would be very similar to nowadays you see like at car dealerships. You would actually drive into the facility to unload. It would be fire protection would be sprinkled. It's mostly all concrete and steel. This one we're proposing would basically be only 20-foot high. It wouldn't be tall at all. It'd be a one-story, and we would plan on buffering the old mill side where we know is a residential community. We'd like to make a landscape mound on that side so that none of the residents would actually look in to see any of the storage units. We've made it so that the fire department has circulation around it, and I did review comments from the fire chief about adding hydrants so that we meet the protection and code, but be a very subtle architectural building. We have experience. We've built about five or six of them in greater Cleveland. Most of the ones we've built are two-story, but now we're actually building the single stories so that we, most of our clients want to have all the drive-in, climate-controlled experience. We do have, we do offer some additional outside ones for contractors and other businesses that need storage. And in this particular site, we were the previous owners of the CBS right there, and we were looking at the other lot with Pepler and I think it's Fuchs have, we have spoken with them, and they are, they're supportive of what we'd like to do. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer. Brandon can find any architecture or settings.
Did you have anything that you wanted to share on?
Just, just from a site plan perspective, we're really trying to be sensitive to the buffering street and residences across the street. On the plan, you can kind of see the green bull berm that we've set up that we heavily landscaped to again, try to screen and obscure the view to be able to kind of shield that and allow it to kind of feel like the residential streets, kind of country original street that it is. Also, the orientation and the location of the retention area, et cetera, is just natural topography of the site and trying to keep access in and out. It's not a heavily trafficked use. You know, people come in, drop their stuff off, and quietly kind of leave. It's not something that has a extreme amount of constant, you know, nine-to-five type mentality where there's going to be a huge influx of traffic in the morning or evening. It's just kind of constant flow, you know, kind of subtly throughout the day and on weekends. So, happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Questions from Planning Commission will come during the work session portion of the agenda. This here is the public hearing portion, so now is the opportunity for members of the community to come forward if they would like to speak on this project. Any comments from the community? If you'd like to speak on this item, you can come forward to the microphone, your name and address, and address your comments to the Planning Commission.
Hi, I'm Leon Foot, 2170 Old Mill Road, and I'd like to know, is there any height on the landscaping that you're proposing?
So, our building would be more than 20-foot tall, so we would balance the site so that it would take into consideration, so that none of your sightlines would be looking into it. So, I, I don't know off the top of my head, usually the mound is a 301, it's a 45, and then all.
So, so let me, let me, I'm sorry to interrupt. So, just so you understand, this evening, Planning Commission is only looking at the request for the conditional use, which is whether or not we'll allow our storage facility in this district. The applicant needs to come back to us with the full set of site plan, landscape plan, addressing the berm, which is excellent questions, but all of those items, which while they're very important, are not what we'll be voting on this evening. It's just strictly whether or not we're going to permit this use in the district, and then they have a lot more work to do to come back.
So, I'm a little ahead.
No, no. It's good that you're aware of that, and you're making that, but I just want you to be aware that we won't be voting on anything relative to landscaping or berming this evening, but making your point so that they're aware of it going forward, no, no problem.
Okay.
Sir, I had the actual question written down on my notes. I had your question, so, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll get back to you in the work session portion of the agenda. The second item, public hearing, is the public facility site plan, Glen Meadow Park Improvements, 1961 Glen Meadow Drive.
Amy Moore, city engineer. I believe Lynn handed out, anybody that's interested, anybody that's interested in this project, got a copy? Okay. What we're looking at or proposing to do is add two pickleball courts adjacent to the existing pickleball courts, add a little more parking, extending the parking that's already parking for the, what used to be the tennis courts, now the pickleball courts in the vicinity, moving a light pole to the other side where all the other light poles run, pretty much goes through there, make sure the grading and drainage flows away and flows to Tinker's Creek, and that's pretty much the proposal at this time.
Thank you. Opportunity for members of the community to come forward and speak on this project. Please come up to the mic, your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Sarah Achitura. I live at 9993 Bell Meadow, and we have lived there since 2008 and have actually loved living by the park because it is a place that our community gets to come to and use and celebrate. The challenges, the pickleball courts have significantly changed our experience. They are very loud. From sunup until well past sundown, they are being used, and it is loud music, sometimes often, I'm not going to say sometimes, it is often profane language. I think people are just really getting into the game, possibly. It is just like a constant, the sound of the ball is constant. And so, what our request, the ask really is, is it possible to consider another location to expand the pickleball courts, possibly to someplace that doesn't butt right up to someone's property? Because this is the first time I've seen the plans, and I notice now that's getting closer to the fence. If not, my request would be, is there a possibility of installing some type of noise dampening structure of some way so that we don't have now an increase in the sound that's already negatively impacting our backyard? Thank you.
Thank you. Or name and address, please.
My name's Andrew Fabian. I'm Sarah Achitura's husband. Live at the same address, 9993 Bell Meadow Drive, and I just want to echo what she said. We love the pickleball courts. We play pickleball. We like the backyard. We've, like, our family has used the amenities that the parks provided, like, as our children have grown up, and it's, it's wonderful that it exists there. We just want to be thinking about, like, we know that we withheld complaining up until this point because, take the good and the bad, we're trying to be as understanding as possible, but just the idea that there'd be that many courts closer to our house just isn't something that we, it's kind of upsetting. And so, yeah, we would just like to propose any other options, maybe like diversifying, putting some at Liberty or another location just so that there isn't an increased noise that affects. We have the windows open in our house a good chunk of the time, and we can hear it throughout the entire house, and what would seem like casual conversations, people talking like it's very clear, like, in our house, and then the noise is constant, like my wife was saying. So, it's just one of those things where if, doesn't directly affect us, I could just see how that this could affect other people in the future. It's just something to be thinking about. We also know that our neighbors had submitted a letter saying something to the same effect, but yeah, just wanted to kind of put this stuff out there so that you all are making as best of a decision as possible, not only just for us, but to other people who would live there in the future. Thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this topic?
Do you have to sign in?
You can come up and sign in now if you haven't already, but that's fine.
You know, I would just love to.
I'm sorry, I need your name and address.
My name's Keith Camiati. I live at 1939 Glenwood Drive. So, I like live right next to the park road, and like the existing pickleball is like right in my backyard, so I'm like the closest.
Yeah, I'm the closest resident to the existing. Yeah, because the road.
I'm sorry, sir. Sir, I need you to stay at the podium. Yeah, it's being recorded, so they need to be able to hear what's been said.
I'm a rookie at this. I lived in the city for 44 years. I don't think I've ever even been to a meeting.
That's all right.
But not the personal.
She baited you to walking over there.
That's right. We're happy to have you.
Is it, um, did I understand, did you say it was going to be lit?
No.
No, okay. So, did the park, is it open from dawn to dusk? Is that the?
Correct.
So, because like, I agree with, I'm not sure what, how many houses down you are.
We're just like, we're directly, yeah, we're probably nice close house. We draw one from windows to where we're going to be, we did our house.
Okay. So, I'm the one that has like the palm tree in the back, you kind of know, like, I got the Key West, like Ted Yates is gone, but I always wanted to show him, like, because he's, went to Key West, but I think he started all this pickleball, I guess. But, um, yeah, I agree with the noise. I mean, if there was some kind of way with the landscaping, the park is beautiful, they landscaped it, they do a lot of maintenance, it's beautiful. Like, I live next to where they put all the ornamental grasses. They did a nice job there where there used to be a house. Kathy Prokop put in all these beautiful evergreens right here by the park road, but I agree if there was some kind of sound barrier, something, I agree with that. So, looking at this proposal, it's just going next to the existing towards Bell Meadow, right?
Any other comments that you'd like to share?
I don't really have anything, but I'm sorry.
No, I understand, understand what you're asking.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Well, okay, I appreciate you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the third item in the public hearing agenda, is the conditional use permit application for recreation use indoors at 8287 Darrow Road. Name and address, please.
First name Tyler, last name is Neil. Address is 3406 Priscilla Avenue, Parma, Ohio. A little bit about our project. Our goal is to, like it says here, contain, obtain conditional use permit for a industrial space, as you said, 8287 Darrow Road. I'm co-founder and director of Run the Show. Essentially, we conduct basketball skill and development programs. We've operated in northeast Ohio for a handful of years now, just looking to get into our own space. We have ran a similar program, actually the exact same program, in another space in another city, so we do have experience in a very similar building, very similar size with surrounding businesses, but, you know, our focus is on individual, small group basketball skill development curriculum. We have a small staff of coaches, so that building would just be used for a small court space and then also office space for our staff. That's basic, that's the, that's the summary of it. Obviously happy to answer any questions in the working session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the community, anyone who would like to come speak on this proposal? Now's the opportunity, come forward, anyone? Seeing none, 7:15, we'll, we'll close the public hearing portion of the agenda. Just so everyone knows, we kind of go through this when we have a public hearing. It's kind of a three-step process. The public hearing's first, now we'll have a work session to discuss it, and then the regular meeting where if need be, we'll make any motions to vote on anything. So, the work session, the first item on the agenda is the self-storage, the self-serve storage facility conditional use permit. If the applicant could please come back up to the podium. Is there anything else that you'd like to share with Planning Commission that you didn't bring up during the public hearing portion?
Yes, I want to let you know a little about the self-storage, that's sort of a decadent connotation that it was always drive-up storage and people just dropped their stuff. We are a Class A facility. We are managed by a publicly traded company called Extraspace out of Salt Lake City, and it's more of a very boutique business where it's more of service-oriented. The whole idea is to come in and avoid inclement weather such as today's, like today. We can drive inside the facility, it's secure, cameras, you're actually have to, you get photo ID coming in while you're in, everything's on security when you leave, it's a gated facility. So, there is, uh, there is a big demand for it, and that, believe it or not, our average customer is a suburban housewife that wants her house decluttered and their garage, to be able to park two cars in their garage instead of parking outside. So, we had success with a couple of these already. We, like I said, we built about five or six of them, and we use, we put quite a bit of money in it, we build them first class, and we run them first class. I think we'd be a great asset to the community. There's not a lot of traffic, which is really more, you get your weekend warriors on a Saturday morning, and some guy convinces his buddies to help him move, and he doesn't want to, but, and it's, it's a nice little thing for small businesses, too. Even people who spoke at Pepler folks, they're actually, if we go ahead with it, they, they're actually leasing some space from us.
All right. A few things. First of all, the request for the conditional use permit to allow the self-service storage facility, you should know, no outside storage is permitted as, as part of this approval. If you would want that, you'd need to come back and come in for a separate, but I would say be hard-pressed for that, so just so you know, no outside storage at this time will be permitted as part of this review and if it's approved. Also, this is not anything to do, I, I like that you provided a site plan and lets us see what you're doing, but tonight's approval has nothing to do with the site plan. There's a lot, as Lynn laid out in her report, there's a lot of items still to be addressed. I would make the recommendation to you that you come back, assuming you get the approval tonight, and you go forward with a preliminary site plan approval, review, I should say. It's not required, but there are a lot of things on here, and, you know, if you want to go whole hog and complete everything and then come in and take that chance, that's up to you. But landscaping, mounding is going to be critical. I will say beneficial is that you are not coming in off of Old Mill Road. That would have been a detriment, and we'd like to, we have that access from 91. So, again, I know in Lynn's report, there's a lot of items that you should review and take a look at. There'll be questions about fencing, locations, and, and access, and, and how, how you, you know, provide security on the property, lighting and things of that nature. So, those are my comments. Ed, note it this time. Craig?
No, I'm just, on the site plan, like, lighting and landscaping are two, are the things I think about.
Michael?
Yes, definitely recommend beef of the landscape. You mentioned photo ID checks for people coming in and out?
It's basically fingerprinted, it's a thing called PTI in OpenTech. It's like going, you, you have to press a code in while you're there, it's taking a picture of you, so sense sort of fingerprints you coming in, tells you how long you're in the building, and then to get out of the building, you have to do the same thing.
Got it. So, no 24 hour?
No, we're, we're a nine-to-five business, and 10-to-6 shut on Sundays, and we, like I said, we are, we are a gated property.
Wait, say, say that again about the hours, you're nine-to-five?
We're basically, we're a nine-to-five business.
Okay.
10-to-6 on Saturdays, closed on Sundays.
That's office hours or access?
Office. Access, we don't let anyone on the property after 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay.
I would encourage, if you want, you could actually, we, on the other west, we've built a couple, and we'll show you architecturally what they look like, and if you ever want to visit one, we could walk you through, if you have any interest in seeing how one actually functions.
You got one in Hawaii?
No. Working on Florida with this guy. Just kidding, just kidding.
Overall, we know the site plan's not required, but felt it would probably close the loop on a lot of questions, so we wanted to kind of give that programmatic site plan just so you can kind of see where pieces and parts and, and ideas, and then locationally, where some of these, you know, bigger items. From a landscaping perspective, we, we absolutely know and expect heavy comment on, on that discussion, and, and is why we've, you know, set this, first off, when you strip a site like this, that's going to have a pretty significant amount of topsoil anyway, it's easy to lose it in a, in a berm, and also helps the cause of screening, but then landscaping with evergreens and other types of perennials and other aspects will, will further help, I think, you know, the buffer and integrating into the community. I think overall, the use, I think, nestles very well in for the site condition, and again, I, I think, you know, the intention that we laid this out was, you know, act as often 91s that we, you know, do not disturb, you know, the buffering and adjacent uses and integrate well into the community.
91 access is a sure thing, definitely, you're, you're not bad.
No, we have an easement access to, to that.
Bill, any comments or questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Lynn, anything else that we should be aware of on this?
Just that part of the fire department comment was providing that access onto Old Mill, a gated fire access.
Did not spot, so that only they have access to?
I read this letter about making sure we do that on our properties that there's a fire line, and not where we 158, that there's access for the property.
All right. If you want to have a seat, we'll get back to the regular portion of the meeting. Thank you. Work session, second item, Glen Meadow Park Improvements, Public Facilities, Site Plan 1961 Glenwood Drive. Anything else you wanted to share, Amy, with Planning Commission?
As far as, I know there was concerns about noise, and I did a quick scan here. Parks and Rec pretty much puts up the wind noise screen, that screening is wind and noise screening. There might be a higher level of protection if this is a concern, of different types of material that could be used associated with that. I don't think the mayor or anybody else would be, if I were to say, we will research that and put the highest level on there. That's about the only thing I can think we can do to add noise. We're not building a noise wall there or something else. We do have the evergreen trees, and at some point, I know some of those ever.
Is there room for additional trees?
Pardon?
Is there room for additional trees in?
No, but the trees that are there are older, and we have looked in the past of increasing that with a newer growth, trees in there. I just can't, that, that project was through Service Department, and I know they were looking at grant money to try and do something there because it is an older growth, and, and you start getting, you know, some die-off on some of those trees that they had looked at, you know, something there for, for creating some of that screening. But as far as the screening that, I can say with this project, the wind screening, noise screening that's up there was what we were planning on matching, but we'll, I have no problem, you know, taking this back and, and looking at what is the best protection for noise, because there are thicker materials than probably what's out there, what we typically use. Anything else? I mean, like I said, I'll let you, I'll just answer questions at that, so.
So, when is the city planning on making these improvements and doing this work?
This would be sold with our road program, so we'd sell it in the beginning in the next two months, and it would be a summer project. Probably would fall in the schedule somewhere between, in March, between April and, and September.
All right, so that works into my comment, which is recommending that we table this item tonight since we have opportunity, that you're not ready to start construction on this like immediately, so we have the opportunity to look at, and talk to Parks and Rec about other locations. It may not be feasible, but at least we could have that discussion. We could talk about what other noise barrier, possible improvements or products are available. And lastly, if need be, with Parks and Recs, what types of rules and regulations we can put in place as far as limiting hours of playing time so that they're not starting at 7:00 in the morning on a Saturday or Sunday when it's light out, abusive language, music. I, I know, I know those things only work if they're, it's hard to enforce them.
Yeah, there was, there was a list that I think was emailed out by Jen Benison today addressing what's on that sign, which does talk about noise. Dawn to dusk is what the parks are open from, so that would be, you know, a discussion of operations, if that's something that operations wanted to change, and I understand your.
Yeah, I can't imagine 6:30 in the morning, I mean, hearing the, the ponging, the banging of the paddle.
I can.
Yeah, I can't imagine, you can, you can do it.
Have they, have they measured the sound? Do we have a, do we have a measurement on it?
We, we have, we have not done a, a sound study.
Because a neighbor plays it in their yard, and I, I live across from Liberty Park, and I can hear bass. I couldn't imagine pickleball courts. Honestly.
Are the players individuals, or is this a league? Because in my mind, if it's a league, Jen at Parks and Rec has a family meeting with a MASP.
I don't believe it's a league.
It's, it's open to everybody. It's open to the public. They, they do, um.
It's busy.
Yeah, you can reserve it for a tournament, like, somebody could come in, but they have to, they have to do that, say, on Saturday, we were running this pickleball tournament. Otherwise, it's just open to the public for, for use, and, and it is heavily used. There is usually, they're, they're right, there, there's constant use of the pickleball courts, it's kind of why we're looking at adding a couple pickleball courts because of the, the use and need.
I just have one, is it, is it residence, or residence from other cities?
It's, it should not be available for anybody to play there outside, but there's, there's nobody who, who is there to control that. I mean, there's not a worker there who sits there and watches, so I guess that could be put on the signage.
We, we don't close any of our parks to, to anybody that's outside the community. All the parks are open.
Is it, are all of the trees going to be removed here? Kind of looks like that's which.
Three trees, well, three trees are actually in the removal, yeah.
So, I need to know from other Planning Commission members if you, if you would think you want to move on this for the site plan, or if you're willing to agree to postponing this until the January meeting and giving them the opportunity to look into and addressing some of these items that have come up this evening.
I would say, I'm very cautious of any expansion. I'm listening to what they say, and I can just imagine, you know, how noisy it is, so I'm, I'm cautious of it.
All right, so you support tabling it and letting them come back, do more research?
I would like to know exactly how much noise it makes, if there's any way to measure that, and really put a number to it to, you know, I mean, they're concerned about it.
Yeah, and I, I would support tabling it. I guess I was asking, instead of moving two courts closer to the houses, we'll put three on the end of it.
That was my first design. I was the master planning of the park. They're looking at a pavilion that eventually they could go there, they could be shared for both pickleball as well as safety town, and even the, the other fields for anything they might have associated with the pavilion in there. But I did have those three laid out there originally.
Given this concern, maybe we can revisit it.
I'm an old architect.
But you look at me when you say that. Michael, how do you, what is your take on?
I, I, I'm just going to ask the same thing, just to share. Probably worth having a park in, Jen or somebody, park, park committee like that, look at this , too. These are questions, even there's one line that they can answer. I heard that an email was out, I didn't see it.
And then maybe like a higher fence on the, on the side of the Bell Meadow.
And then maybe like a higher fence on the, on the side of the Bell Meadow, rather than just whatever it is.
It's 10 feet.
10 feet. You can make it 15 with a sound barrier on it.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, and what, at the 10-foot probably takes care of this, any sound coming that way. A, a better product than the fence you suggested is probably a good step in the right direction.
I mean, I, I think all those things are open on the table to reduce the impact.
Yeah.
It, a higher fence may help. I'm not a study of sound engineering, but it may help.
So, I guess we need to go back to Parks and Rec, share these comments with them, see if we have the ability to test that, testables. Of course, like you need somebody out there playing and whacking around the ball around. I'm not sure I see that happening here in the next couple of weeks. Playing pickleball?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an avid sport. Okay, so for clarification for my, my, because I heard, I, I have heard, and I have listened, I've heard two different things here, is one, possibly extending the pickleball courts on some other location on this, in this park, or actually what I think I heard is, can we look at a different park or location to put those pickleball courts? And we did kind of discuss that internally. It was not the consensus at the time, but I'm just the engineer laying them out where they fit. So, having some others here to present it to you would be.
In the current surrounding material of the court, there's a windshield and privacy screen. It's not really-
Yeah, and I, and I just Googled after. They said, there are ones, they say, for noise, it is a combination, and it's a type of fabric you would use could provide a little more sound barrier, and I'd have to research what, what fabric that would be.
And, and I would think that if, if after going through this, and you said that there was an email, no one on Plan Commission saw, but if there was some rules and regulations that Parks and Rec was planning on putting together, that would surely be good for us to, to see and to be able to share with, with the community as to what those are, limiting, like I said, limiting hours, and, I mean, it puts the burden of, of enforcement's unfortunately still on the residents when they're hearing these issues to have to call and say something because the police and, or no one is sitting there obviously all the time. But we're hoping that a deterrent is, helps. Yes, Michael. I see those wheels are turning.
My question needs to be directed at the members of the public, but, but what kind of music are they, like big Roland speakers or the old boom boxes? It's-
Everybody's got a Bluetooth speaker at this point, so it's like, it starts with classic rock in the morning to the old crowd, and then it goes, it's like, you know, thank you, never stops and rap at the end of the day, and it just kind of goes throughout, and the volume increases, and it goes on.
But Bluetooth speakers can be Roland, they're like, it's-
It's not that, it was pretty mad.
But enough you can hear.
And it's multiple, like, so when you think of six courts, even if you give them a playing music, it's a lot, it's just very loud.
And then you propose courts, we gather in like, maybe different events, so like, that's, yeah.
Well, it's almost 50 feet from the property line, but I, I, did, did you say that people were playing in the dark?
Oh, yeah, because younger people have better night vision.
Playing the rain and the dark? Okay, well, that, that obviously shouldn't be happening even now, so, Amy, I mean, does that give you enough direction, at least, on what we're looking for?
For location and then the enforcement from, from law enforcement, so.
Yeah. At, at least we can explore these other options. Again, because we're not ready to start construction tomorrow due to the weather, I think we should take this opportunity to do that. So, do I have a, we make a motion in this portion or in the, in the regular agenda portion?
In the regular. We could just make the motion to postpone it to Jan.
Table it, to table it.
I mean, I, I just want to say that I definitely support more pickleball courts. There's a need for that, but let's try to do it so the residents aren't affected as much.
I have a question. Like, how many pickleball courts are back by the pool, you know, where the, by 40?
They're all tennis courts.
Those are all tennis courts. This might be the only pickleball courts that we currently have.
Other than internally where we use the fieldhouse for pickleball.
The only, the only exterior ones are those six that exist currently. Yeah, I, I, I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing that we've heard of at this time.
The, the only discussion we've had on those is the school uses those for tennis.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't want to totally get rid of the tennis. Yeah, the school uses those, and, and I know there was a slight uprising from the tennis players when these got converted, so I don't see us converting more, only adding if we can find the right locations to do so.
Tennis courts in schools, you're talking about the basketball court up there.
Yeah, there are tennis courts back further in, but they're also used, you know, during, during school period, periods, whenever they're running their program, practices and games, I think they're used as well, or at least open to the public, but, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
All right. The third item in the work session is the conditional use permit request for the recreation use indoor at 8287. Anything else that you'd like to share with Planning Commission on your application?
Sure. Just, just to continue to provide clarity, that our focus is on, you know, individual and small group activities. That's, that's our business model, and, you know, we're not going to, in small clinics, but we're not going to be having, you know, large events, tournaments, you know, we don't have teams or anything like that. So, just so there's clarity that, on that item.
All right, thank you. I, I think the, the question I originally had, had to do with parking, and I had conversations with Lynn on this. There, there are a lot more parking spaces that are on the site that are, that, than, that are required for the overall use. So, while I don't think seven spaces by themselves would support this 7,000 square foot space based on, that's what they have allocated to it. There are additional spaces on here. There only required 56 spaces, but for the whole building, but they have 126. So, I think that the parking issue shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue. With that, and a lot of their hours of operation don't necessarily fall during main business time, so I think those are all beneficial, and I think it's an interesting use to bring into the community. Ed, any comments or questions?
No, I agree.
Craig?
Can you just, I guess I didn't get the full explanation. You have three warehouse areas and then like an office area?
No, they're just taking this one 7,000 square foot space right here. Those other ones are just happen to be available within the building.
And, and that's going to, is it high enough for basketball court and all that, obviously?
Yeah, yeah. So, as I kind of mentioned briefly earlier, we have experience in a very almost identical space in another city that we've done this in. And, you know, so, yeah, dimensions, height, we, we've, you know, we're comfortable with all that and everything like that, so.
And a few offices, your warehouse potentially?
So, so the, the space that we're looking at here is, so the warehouse has the high ceilings. I believe that's roughly 4,500 square feet, and then there's already office space in there that we'll just assume as well. So, yeah, that's what I meant by that.
Anything else? Michael?
I'm hoping as a bonus it improves our tigers, maybe develop some University Kentucky Wildcats.
We can do that.
Thank you. Bill, any, Bill, any comments or questions?
Mike taking kids to basketball practice is long gone, so.
So, we might not be seeing you then, huh?
Grandkids.
Grandkids, maybe.
Lynn, anything else we should be aware of on this?
Just, as I think I had mentioned to you, Mark, the, the building owner also uses space there. So, in terms of parking, they're, they're not going to shoot themselves in the foot with their parking needs because they're occupying a portion of the building as well.
All right. All right, thank you. If you have a seat, we'll get back to you here in the regular agenda portion. It's 7:39, and let's roll in to the regular meeting agenda. The first item is the approval of the October 21st, 2024 minutes. Any comments or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. Public participation opportunity for members of the community to address Planning Commission. If there's anything you'd like to speak on that you already haven't spoken on, now's your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll go to the next item, which is the conditional use permit request for the self-serve storage on Old Mill Road. The applicant can please come forward again, just in case there's anything else. Anything else that you would like to share with Planning Commission on this application? No, I'd like to thank you for your time and your public service. Thank you. Ed, anything else?
No, sir.
Craig? Michael?
Yes.
Just a reminder that this is just for the conditional use. No site plan at this time. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representatives, along with the submitted conditional use request and application for Twinsburg Storage on Old Mill Road, permanent parcel number 64-09671, date stamped received November 5th, 2024, I move that Planning Commission recommend to City Council issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow a self-serve storage facility in the IM Innovation and Manufacturing Zone.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoegler?
Yes.
So, you have a 4-0 recommendation. This actually needs final approval from City Council, which will be your next step.
Thank you.
In January.
Thank you for your time.
In January, yes. The next item on the agenda is the site plan request for the public facilities, site plan in Glen Meadow Park Improvements, 1961, Glen would drive. I'm going to make a motion that we table this item until the next meeting to allow the city to gather up this additional information we've discussed this evening. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Michael. Any discussion? Roll call for tabling?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoegler?
Yes.
All right, so we'll see that back here with more information forthcoming. The next item is the conditional use permit request for indoor recreation use at 8287 Darrell Road. Mr. Neal, anything else that you would like to share with Planning Commission this evening?
No, just would, would love the opportunity to join the, be part of the community.
Thank you. Ed, anything?
No, sir.
Craig?
No.
Michael?
No, cats. Nothing.
I'd like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with a submitted conditional use request and application for Run the Show Enterprise, 8287 Darrell Road, permanent parcel number 64-04300, dated November 21st, 2024, I move that Planning Commission recommend to City Council the issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow an indoor recreational facility in the IM Innovation and Manufacturing Zone. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Craig. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoegler?
Yes.
Recommendation 4-0 to City Council, where they will have final vote and approval on this item, which will happen in January.
Like, I believe it's January 14.
Second Tuesday in January is the first meeting.
Thank you.
I just, I don't have a calendar.
Thank you. Communications and miscellaneous. Ed, anything?
No, sir.
Craig?
No.
Michael?
No, sir.
Bill, anything?
No, again, Mr. Barr's son's 16th birthday was today, so I'm filling in.
Well, we're happy to have you here even on a limited basis.
Always a pleasure to see you, Mark.
Lynn, anything, communications miscellaneous, what should we look forward to in our upcoming January meeting?
We have received an application for rezoning request at Chamberlain Road and State Route 82. The heritage development property, they would like to be on the May ballot.
Wait, I'm sorry, for which? Isn't it often, we already get a rezoning request?
We did.
This, this will be the fourth?
But are they asking it for something different than what they just asked for that we have gave them?
Not to my knowledge. I haven't looked at it in depth, but.
So, it went industrial, and it went commercial, and now he's been trying, or excuse me, past the street went commercial.
Right, it was from commercial to residential, and so then this, I believe, has been on the ballot twice to go from commercial to residential.
I think it's been three.
Is it because, is it because it was turned down that they have to come back again before us for the rezoning request?
Yes.
Even though it's the same?
Yes.
Okay. Just so I understand that the wheels sometimes are wobbly. Okay, I'm sorry. Anything else?
That's all I have right now, is that.
All right, and then we'll, we'll have the city back here for, for the pickleball courts.
Thanks for the note, Coach.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Anything else, Lynn, on anything?
No, that's it.
All right. I need a motion to excuse Steve from this evening's meeting. Move from Michael. A second?
A second.
Second from Craig. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoegler?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes. I want to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday. Enjoy time with family and friends, and be safe. Adjournment at 7:46.